All right, you're on record.
Okay. Meeting of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, December 4th, 2023 at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Stensayal.
Here.
Mr. Von Aken.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We have our board planner, Ms. Winter, our board engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our board attorney, Ms. Stein.
If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. Is there anyone here who has an item that they wish to discuss with this board that is not on our agenda for tonight? Hearing and seeing none. We'll move along. First thing we have are a couple of resolutions. Um, why don't we go through them one at a time? There should be a list in your packet tonight saying who can vote on which.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Do I have some motions here?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
We've got one.
Chairman, I apologize. The first one's a minor and we only have one member, uh, no, uh, only one member here that can vote for that one.
Yeah, so I can't have a second. So I guess we can't do that one.
You can have, um, a non-voting member make the second.
Make a second. All right. Um, so it's gonna be a vote of one. Cool.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I move the, um, approval of applicant, of the resolution for application number 22:535, DGN 94, Papco Drive, Block 353, Lot 7, Zone R4.
I'll second it, just.
Thank you, Tom.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Math?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Uh, yes. I don't know.
I'm sorry.
All right. Uh, we have three other, uh, resolutions in our packet here. Um, if I can get somebody to move, uh, Pomeroy Road.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, motion for resolution for 249, Pomeroy Road, Block 737, Lot 3, redevelopment plan.
Do we have a second?
Second, Von Aken.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
DePiero?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Von Aken?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes. Next, we have, uh, 2 Campus Drive and 3 Campus Drive, areas in need of study. Do I have a motion approving that?
Mr. Chairman, I motion to approve, um, 2 Campus Drive and 3 Campus Drive area in need, in need of study.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
DePiero?
Yes.
Math?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Von Aken?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes. Lastly, we have 2 and 3 Campus Drive for the redevelopment plan. Uh, do I have a motion approving the, uh, resolution for that? Is there a saying or?
Did we, did we do the redevelopment plan?
No.
No? It was just the study? Or was it the act?
Yeah, I, uh, the resolutions were sent to me the same day.
Okay, perfect. Yep, that's fine.
So.
It is separate.
It is separate. All right.
I remember.
I will offer the resolution for 2 Campus Drive and 3 Campus Drive redevelopment plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
DePiero?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Epstein.
Shaw?
Yes.
Von Aken?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes. All right. That moves us to our agenda for tonight. Um, we'll start with application number 23, spot 525, Township of Parsippany, uh, 28 Continental Road, uh, Mountain Way Rear, Block 15, Spot 8, Lot 35, Spot 01, courtesy review for an unmanned water tank facility, installation of antennas, and relocation of five antennas on a monopole.
Um, and if it's okay with the board, um, if we could also do it with application 23, uh, 526, uh, both sites are part of the same project and they were just submitted under two, two applications.
I would be fine with that as long as our attorney is happy with that.
Okay. Um, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, the Parsippany Police Department operates a four-site, uh, radio network that supports all the public safety agencies within the town. Uh, the system's been functional and supporting radio traffic since 2020. Uh, two of the sites are co-located on water department, uh, tanks that are currently in need of painting. Uh, so the police department and the water department have been looking into options to create a permanent facility that the public safety radio network could offload onto to facilitate the painting of the water tanks. Um, one of those sites is at 28 Continental Road and the other site is at 459 Pomeroy Road. Uh, the proposed tower at, um, Continental Road is 210 feet tall to the top of the lightning rod. Uh, it will actually support seven collinear antennas, not five, as listed on the agenda. Um, two parabolic dishes, uh, there is an existing 16-foot by 12-foot shelter that's already on the property and a existing propane generator with a thousand gallon tank. Uh, the site on Pomeroy Road will be 208 feet to the top of the lightning rod, will have four collinear antennas and two parabolic antennas. Uh, has an existing triple bay outdoor cabinet, roughly seven feet by three feet, and an existing natural gas generator. Uh, both towers, both towers are currently not planned or designed for additional co-location with wireless service providers.
I'm sorry, before you go any further, could you just enter your appearance for the record?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Uh, Michael Webster, uh, RF engineer with VCOM Engineering, uh, out of, uh, 2147 Route 27, uh, Edison, New Jersey.
I know this is a courtesy review, but, uh...
I'll swear you in, um, and all the testimony before, that you provided previously will also be under oath. So if you just raise your right hand, you swear from the testimony that you've given and that you will give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, the tower heights are, are required to be this tall to ensure that the antennas and the radio signal clear the top of the water tanks. Uh, the water tanks will operate as a giant reflector, so if the antennas are below the tank, whatever the antennas would see behind the tank would not get any radio coverage. Uh, to determine how tall over the tanks we have to go, uh, we look at, uh, several things with the antennas. One is the beam width, which is a measure of where most of the power radiated from the antenna goes to. Uh, it's measured in degrees on the proposed antennas. This is about an eight-degree beam width antenna that's around the center, so it's really four degrees down from the center. And then there's also what is called down tilt, which takes that beam and tilts it further towards the ground. That way you can focus, focus the energy towards the ground. Um, the antenna at, uh, Continental Drive has a six-degree down tilt and the antenna at Pomeroy Road has a three-degree down tilt. These are designed this way so that the, uh, signal can cover the area of the town that requires coverage. Uh, Continental Road has a larger down tilt because it's up on top of the hill, uh, needs to be able to see down in the valley around the hill. Um, other than that, unless you have any further questions, that's, that's the summation of the project.
I have a question.
Uh, Councilman DePiero.
Is, is there any intention to move the antennas back onto the water towers after they're painted?
Uh, no, these would be a permanent monopole facility to leave the antennas over on that. That way, when the water tanks get painted again in the future, we don't have to worry about migrating antennas again.
Okay. Mr. Math?
Did we, did we actually qualify this witness? I'm just curious, because I, I know we kind of...
No, we did not.
Could you tell us your qualifications?
Sure. Um, I'm a RF engineer. Um, I have a electrical engineering degree from Drexel University. I have 18 years' experience in the industry, uh, both designing and testing, uh, commercial and public safety radio networks. Um, and I've testified and been an RF expert for, uh, several boards in the state of New Jersey.
Do you have a license from any?
Uh, no.
Okay.
RF engineers are the one type of engineer that is allowed to not be licensed.
That is correct.
Okay. I, I must admit, when he first appeared before us, I thought he was an attorney.
So did I.
No, I've not been in front of Parsippany before. It's my first time in front of this board.
Okay.
Is, is there gonna be a, you don't have a, anyone to talk about the site plan, though? You're just...
Uh, if you want somebody to talk about the site plan, I do have somebody here that can come up and talk about the site plan.
Should we enter something into the record on that?
I'm sorry?
Should we get somebody to, to enter something into the record on that? I mean, this is a courtesy review after all.
Yeah, you know what? It's, it's okay. We can pass on that.
All right.
I was trying to keep it simple, but we came prepared in case you wanted to.
Mr. Von Aken?
Uh, so there's a existing monopole at the rescue and recovery. Would these, would this be essentially similar to?
This, yes, it would be a very similar monopole to that. It's part of that same network. Um, that monopole we put in back in, I think we constructed it in 2019, if I remember correctly, um, as part of the construction of this...
Of this original project?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other? Mr. Math, again?
Um, so I was gonna ask some questions about the access and how often people are gonna have to come to this site. Is there any need for ongoing, like, maintenance routine or visiting?
Um, not on a super formal basis. A lot of the stuff is remotely managed. Um, a couple, the entities from the police department will go up and maintain radio equipment when they need to, um, but it's not, you know, driving large trucks up there. It's just, you know, normal police, non-mark vehicles.
Okay. Um, do you have, like, a maintenance plan for the access roads? You inspect them once a year or something?
Uh, that would be on the water department. I would have to ask them.
Okay.
I can't answer that.
All right, thank you.
Other members of the board? Any questions? Any? Andrew, do you have anything?
Yeah, just if you could just put into the record, when, when do you think this was gonna go to construction? Um, this is off Continental Drive and then Pomeroy's no residents, but, um, on Continental One, uh, construction duration, time of year, uh, oversized vehicles. Can you just give us a little rundown on what you anticipate?
Uh, sure, for that. Uh, can I call somebody else up? Colleen?
All right.
I could start to answer some of those questions, but I probably couldn't get to the level of detail that you would like.
So if you please raise your right hand, you swear from the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And please state your name and appearance for the record.
My name is Colleen Connolly, C-O-N-N-O-L-L-Y. I am the, um, partner and CEO at Share Design Group. Uh, we, we completed the plans that we're talking about tonight.
So, yeah, this one, just for the board's knowledge, when do you plan on going to construction? How long will it take? And, uh, any kind of, you know, if these are...
Andrew, is your microphone on?
It's probably better now, right? Yeah. Yeah, so just like a sequence of construction type of general, nothing too technical.
Do you want me to give any of my experience or anything? Like, do you wanna qualify me first or?
Are, do you have a professional license or are you just providing fact testimony?
Yes. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. Um, I have a Bachelor's of Engineering in Civil Engineering and I've testified, I believe I've actually testified in front of this board before.
Thank you.
Oh, so to answer your question, um, we are working right now with the purchasing department, uh, to figure out how this is going to go out to bid and that really is going to dictate a lot of the timing as to when it's going to start, um, because there will have to be a process for it to go out to bid and then once it's awarded, uh, the contractor will then, um, be ordering the monopole, waiting for all the materials to come in. Um, regarding the construction time itself, it's typically about two months. Um, time, during that time, the main heavy operation would be when they're putting in the foundation for the monopole itself and when they're stacking the pole. Uh, so that generally will take place over the course of about a week. Um, and then you would have heavy equipment to do the excavation, uh, depending on the type of foundation that's placed in, um, concrete trucks pouring the foundation, and there would be a crane to stack the monopole.
Thank you.
Any other questions by members of the board?
Is anyone gonna do any planning testimony? Nope.
No.
All right. Um, I guess it's my job then to go over...
Yes.
Um...
Please.
The consistency with the master plan. Um, and just to clarify, this is just for police emergency, um, communications. There's no additional antennas are proposed.
Correct.
All right. So, um, as far as the master plan is concerned, um, one of the goals is to ensure that Township Utilities, um, it does not specifically say telecommunications, but it refers to water and sewer are adequately maintained and have sufficient capacity to provide for current and projected populations. Um, also speaks to regular and consistent maintenance and upgrades of utility infrastructure, such as painting the water tower, um, as needed to meet demand, keep the systems in a state of good repair, and respond to technological improvements. Um, and also, uh, additionally, implement plans to upgrade emergency communications infrastructure. The township is in the process of upgrading emergency communication technology between police forces and regional emergency service agencies. So it did touch on those points as far as the master plan is concerned, so it would be consistent.
All right. Uh, Tom? Councilman?
Just, just as a matter of, the township ordinance is pushing antennas to be mounted on existing structures as opposed to monopoles, um, usually for commercial purposes. This is for township purposes, but this is contrary to the ordinance that we have in place right now.
Yes, but there were reasons for that.
Yeah, the, the explanation given, I understand. But I just wanted to note for the record that this is contrary to our ordinance.
The, the ordinance does note that, um, approving board may waive some of the requirements.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, so it's consistent in that way.
All right. Anything else you wish?
Uh, no, I don't have anything further at this time.
Are there any members of the public who have questions in this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. That is the end of your presentation, so I'm gonna ask if there are any members of the public who wish to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this application at this time. Again, hearing and seeing none. This closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing on this subject. Uh, do we wish to have any sort of discussion or does somebody wish to simply move that we find that this courtesy review is consistent with the master plan?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second, Von Aken.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
DePiero?
Yes.
Math?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Von Aken?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
That's for both of the applications.
Correct.
Correct. All right. That moves us along to application number 23:523, New Jersey 9 Sylvan LLC, 9 Sylvan Way, Block 202, Lot 3, Spot 05, Zone SED 10, preliminary and final major site plan to construct a warehouse. I was wrong the last time I made that assumption.
My name is Patrick McCauley. I'm with the law firm Connell Foley out of our Rose Land office. We represent, uh, NJ 9 Sylvan LLC, which is the owner and applicant of the, or the property that's before you tonight. Um, it's a six-acre site, uh, it's Zoned SED 10, um, that's the Specialized Economic Development District 10. Currently has a vacant office building, uh, we propose to demolish the office building and associated parking and construct a 67,200 square foot warehouse consisting of 67,000, 65,000, I'm sorry, 200, uh, square feet of warehouse space and 2,000 square feet of office space with 27 parking spaces, six loading docks, and associated lighting, signage, landscaping, and stormwater management. I anticipate calling five witnesses tonight. Try to, try to have them be brief. Um, the first is Zachary List, who's a principal at Cardinal Point Management, which is an affiliate of the site owner entity, NJ 9 Sylvan LLC. Mr. List will briefly address Cardinal Point's development and management experience and why Cardinal Point decided to proceed with the proposed demolition of the, where, of the office space and construction of this, of the warehouse facilities that will be described tonight and the nature of the anticipated operations we expect an ultimate occupant will, uh, have there. Uh, the next witness will be John Kotay, professional engineer from Langen Engineering and Environmental Services. Langen will, uh, Mr. Kotay will review major details of the site plan, the existing conditions, and the proposed development features. He presented the site plans that are part of the submission, uh, for the application that we should have before you tonight. Our next, next wit, proposed witness will be Grant Alexander, our project architect from GMA Architects. He will review the exterior elevations that you also, I think, have copies of from our submission, application submission and the floor plan. And after that, we have Carl A. Tenke, who is our traffic engineer to address the traffic impact study that was dated July 13, 2023, and also was submitted as part of our application package. So you should have that with you. Uh, Greg Woodruff is our last, uh, witness. He's a professional planner from Langen and he will address, uh, why certain bulk variances are necessary, but are supported by the MLUL Section 70 CC. Uh, those are, just quickly summarized, a minimum front yard setback on Sylvan and Dryden. It's two front yard. You have, uh, maximum driveway width at Sylvan Way where, I'm sorry, where the driveway connects with Sylvan Way. The minimum loading berth area length and, and freestanding monument signs there. Well, only one is permitted in the zone, but we have, there's two already existing and we propose to retain those two. Um, with that, I would point out, I previously submitted my notice of publication, my affidavit of publication and service, um, and so it evolves in order in that regard. So, if I may, I will call my first witness, Mr. List.
Do we have any waivers we need to go over?
We have a couple of waivers. Um, the first is for approval from Morris County Planning Board, um, as long as you're okay with that being conditioned.
I can represent to the board, we will, um, I have submitted the digital copies that they request. They are, they will review those and then we'll submit the hard copies that they wanted for their review, but we submitted the digital copies last week.
Okay. And, uh...
And we can, and we don't object, obviously, to that approval of the county being a condition of approval of this board.
Um, also for the temporary contractors, construction structures being shown on the plans and as a combined preliminary and final site plan approval, um, separate sheets were not submitted, so waiver for that. We don't have any objections to those waivers.
All right. So somebody move the waivers, uh, indicated in the, uh, planner's report of, what was that, 112123?
So moved, Von Aken.
Do I have a second?
Second, Napolitano.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Gonna call Mr. List?
Thank you, Eric. Good evening.
If you please raise your right hand, do you swear from the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yep.
And please state your name, spell your last name, and provide the board with, uh, your background and licensure.
Sure. Uh, my name is Zachary List, L-I-S-Z-T, Sam Zebra Tom. Spent a lot of time in my life on those three letters. Um, I'm the managing director at Cardinal Point Management LLC. As Rick noted, um, the applicant here today is an affiliate of Cardinal Point, so I just wanted to take a brief moment, introduce you guys to us as the owners, uh, explain our ties to New Jersey, tell you a little bit about why we like this particular property and, um, what we envision the end use being here. Um, Cardinal Point Management is a fully integrated commercial real estate investment, uh, firm and we focus on repositioning existing assets as well as new development. Uh, Cardinal Point was founded in September of 2009 by the founding principals Gregory and Rufus Williams. I joined Cardinal Point in 2011 overseeing real estate investments, including, um, negotiations, due diligence, land use, design, construction management, leasing, dispositions, and I am also an attorney, so I handle, you know, a lot of our in-house work as well. Uh, in the past three or four years, our focus has really been on repurposing what we believe are well-located assets to align with the specific trends going on in those particular locations. Um, while Cardinal Point is headquartered in Tampa, Florida, uh, we do have strong ties to New Jersey through, uh, Rufus and Greg's upbringing and early careers. Greg was raised in Summit, um, and after working for Fidelity's Private Equity Real Estate Fund out of college, he returned to New Jersey, worked for Advanced Realty, which is a pretty, I believe, well-known, uh, real estate firm here in the area. Rufus also, uh, spent some time growing up here, went to high school in New Jersey, and he returned from 2001 to 2009 while working at JP Morgan and Sandler, O'Neil and Partners. So as a result, through their ties, we've actively looked for opportunities up here in New Jersey, even though we're down in Florida. We're well acquainted with the Route 10 corridor. We see it as a hub of substantial investment currently. Uh, we think the site is strategically located among prominent corporate entities such as Avis, Zoetis, Wyndham, Louis Vuitton. Um, Morris County ranks as one of the wealthiest counties in the entire nation and notably, you know, we, we always like seeing Capital Grills, Season 52s, you know, Darden Restaurants. We think has one of the best, you know, site selection teams of all the corporations in the country. We think they meticulously review locations and we always view that as a very positive factor in our site selections. Um, the existing 1982 construction Class B office building faces financial challenges for retenanting in its current use, just there's very high vacancy for that type of product right now. We're proposing repurposing it into a Class A warehouse, given the very strong demand for that type of product. I believe, you know, it's got less than 3% vacancy compared. Uh, we're working on a similar project in Monmouth County right now, uh, you know, repurposing a vacant office building, ground up warehouse development, and it's actually already under contract to an end user. Um, our historical experience and market analysis indicates that the ideal use for this building will be a traditional warehouse and storage facility, 10 to 25 employees, normal business hours. Um, I wanna highlight, we've designed this with 27 parking spaces for... I want to highlight, we've designed this with 27 parking spaces for 67,200 square feet. And distinctly, we do not anticipate any sort of like last mile user. Somebody like that would probably require approximately 450 to 500 parking spaces for this size of building. We have had some interest already from a flooring distributor, a plumbing distributor, a wine distributor, a couple other single-user, excuse me, facilities. We think the property provides great access to the highway infrastructure without the need to unnecessarily interfere with the residential areas. And so that's a little bit about us and what we're trying to do and why we like the asset. So if you have questions for me, happy to answer. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to the team of experts here to present the details of the project.
Members of the... Mr....
Just a general question.
Steve Piro.
I've been doing this for 40 years. And 40 years ago, we were talking about these great office complexes and the need for offices, and we've got the glut of offices, and now they're gone. Now, we have a need for lots and lots of warehouses, and they're replacing all of these offices. How long is that going to last? I don't know if you have a real answer, but...
Yes.
Just an observation.
It's a good observation. It's a fair one. It's a question I, unfortunately, don't have the crystal ball to answer for you. We think for the foreseeable future, the lifespan of new developments, that the Class A warehouse would be better utilized at the current time.
Okay. I wasn't...
Fair enough.
Mr. Math, you have a...
So if I understand your testimony, you may not have said explicitly, but you don't have a tenant in mind right now.
We do not have a specific end user apparently. That's correct.
Okay. So any calculations involving number of employees is pure conjecture at this point?
To a degree. I mean, it's based on our experience. It's based on market analysis. It's based on some of the norms and numbers that engineers use when calculating traffic studies and users based on parking and size. I think some of these guys will get into a little more detail on that for you during their testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on the board have any questions? Mr. Canjiano, do you have any?
No, not for the witness, no.
Not for this one? That's okay. Very good. Mr. Apolteno?
The entrance is only going to be off something by?
There is an access point off of Dryden, but I think for truck access, and I don't want to speak out of line. I believe it's designed for in and out on Sylvan, but only really going to and coming from the east.
Okay.
And I know...
Got traffic eye, right? Okay, and one more thing. Just to clarify, I might have misheard. You said stores, but you don't mean like a self-storage place or...
No, no. I mean more like warehouse.
Got you. Thank you.
I was going to say, your plot CP 102 shows entrances and exits from both Dryden and Sylvan.
Yes, there is an access point.
Okay, just...
Sylvan is right here and only coming in.
Are there any members of the public who have questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor, your next witness.
I'd like to call my next witness.
Okay. Usually over there, so that there are members of the public and members of the board can see it, although we often make it so Mr. Canjiano has a problem.
I think well, but one of the boards are drawings that the board already has as part of our application.
That's usually the way it works, yeah.
But we do have one that is not, and we don't have copies to distribute, but we will send copies if the board wants to.
We'll mark that one when it comes to it.
I'm marking all the boards.
Okay.
We already marked. We pre-marked.
And then you can email it to me, the new one.
Right. It's the same. Yeah, but he was going to bring that 11 and 1/2 by 7 feet for distribution, and then we left.
You're allowed to get up and move over and... It's always good form to let the public have a view.
Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide the board with your background and licensure.
Sure. My name is John Kotay. I work for Langen Engineering and Environmental Services. I've been licensed in the state of New Jersey since 1991. I've testified before this board on other applications in precipity. I've been working for Langen for 25 years and generally in the business. Graduated from Stevens Institute of Technology in 1986 with a degree in civil engineering.
Any questions?
And you're a licensed professional engineer?
Yes, and my license is in good standing.
In good standing.
I offer Mr. Kotay as an expert in civil engineering.
Everybody satisfied with the...
No objection.
Thank you.
Can you describe for the board your role at Langen in connection with this application?
Sure.
And then describe for the board the property location, conditions.
Can everybody speak into the microphones, please?
It's existing conditions and proposed development.
Sure. So I'm the engineer of record for the project. I'm a principal at Langen Engineering, and I've designed this project. The project's been designed under my supervision for the overall project, and again, the engineer of record for the project. So I'm going to take a minute. I'm going to introduce a board to orientate everybody for the project. Is that good enough? Am I being heard? Okay. So the board I'm putting up is a board entitled Site Plan with Aerial Overview. It's not in the package you have, but it's exhibit EXO2, and it's dated December 4, 2023.
John, can you also indicate what exhibit?
It'd be exhibit A1.
A1.
And I did actually bring copies with me if the board would like me to distribute to them individually. It's up to the board.
It's useful.
Okay. If you like that, sure.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. So what this board shows is an overview of the property, and we've superimposed a site plan over an aerial view. So the site fronts on both Dryden Way and Sylvan Way. The project proposes an entrance on each roadway. The overall site itself is basically occupying predominantly what's out there today. And the reason for this particular drawing is to point out the existing tree stand that is along the north side of the property and the east side of the property is predominantly going to be staying in the proposed condition. And that blends into some other discussion points I'll bring up in a little bit. But overall, the orientation of the site, using the existing driveway location, we have reoriented the drive based upon pre-application meetings with your engineer, who made a point to us that they wanted to focus the truck traffic not down Sylvan Way to 202, but rather to Route 10 and Dryden Way. So this driveway will serve as a right-in, excuse me, a left-in and a right-out for the purpose of truck traffic maneuvering to the loading docks. So the overall property is a six-acre tract. The property has an existing 2,000-square footprint of an existing office building and about 190 spaces that will be basically taken out under the redevelopment of the property. This project is also under the exemption for the Highlands Commission. We work with the maximum quarter acre of allowable impervious increase, and we fall just under that number, that threshold, with this particular design. So what I'll do then is I'll go through the site and describe the variances and the overall application. So this drawing now is exhibit A2. It's the site plan that is in your package. It's drawing CS 101, and it's dated last revised 9/22/2023. So this site plan shows the location, if you see in the darker gray, this is the primary access drive off of Sylvan Way, accesses through to the loading dock area. Our second connection is to, excuse me, off of Sylvan Way. Driving Way is the connection for the employees and the employee parking. Total of 27 spaces is provided on the south side of the site. The building is proposed as a 67,200-square-foot warehouse. Within that is a 2,000-square-foot footprint for the office. It'll have five loading docks, one drive-in ramp, and one of the positions is identified as a compactor bay for trash. The actual site itself, all of the activity for the trucks will occur on the western edge, coming in off of Dryden Way. The parking has an access point to the office directly to the north of the parking. We provided two ADA spaces, and in addition, we have two EV spaces, one on ADA space and one on a regular space as a part of the EV component of the project. We're required to provide one, but we provided two because it also requires you to have an ADA space as an EV. So we include both that ADA EV as well as a regular space for the employees. The project itself, as far as the layout, all of the truck activities on the west-hand side, we have loading docks that are consistent of a 60-foot storage as well as then 70-foot for maneuvering. And I'll explain to that relative to the variances. So this project has three variances proposed on it. One is the loading dock aisle configuration and dock bay. The ordinance requires 143 feet. We're providing 130. So basically, this is designed for truck turning maneuvers based upon the largest vehicle we anticipate, which would be a WB67, and approximately 73-foot-and-a-half rig that would allow the maneuvers to occur this distance of the 70 feet plus the 60 feet is what we do as an industry standard throughout on warehouses. And the maneuver here is based upon a counterclockwise maneuver for trucks to come in and be able to back into these stalls, and then make a right turn to go back out and a right out onto Sylvan Way. The second variance is the width associated with the access drive coming in off of Sylvan Way. We made this access drive 30 feet wide to allow for concurrent maneuvers of both trucks coming in and trucks leaving to stay within their drive aisles. So the ordinance requires 24 as a max, and we're asking for 30 as a variance on this. The third variance is associated with the, excuse me, the, apologize, front yard setbacks, my apology. So if you're looking at the site and you're looking at the orientation of Dryden Way and Sylvan Way, you see that it's a not a 90-degree angle. The site basically has a sharper angle coming in from Dryden.
Are you talking to the mic?
Nope, sorry, less than 90 degrees coming into Sylvan Way. That creates a setback line on skew on the property. So what we did is a combination of minimizing the amount of paving on the site as well as the footprint. We found that an orientation of the footprint to make it square would require us to ask for a variance. The variances are, I'll say, relative to the ordinance, the requirement for the front yard having a total setback of 100 and... Sorry, I just want to make sure. 150 feet versus the 142.5 on Sylvan Way. And then the 150 on Dryden is requested to be 146.5. So those two variance dimensions we're asking for are related to a rectangular building, squaring that building up relative to a skewed setback lines created by the two different rightaways from both Dryden Way and Sylvan Way. Sorry. With respect to existing non-conforming, the site right now has three existing non-conforming scenarios. One is the minimum setbacks of the signage from the rightaway, where 20 feet is required. The existings are 6.1 feet. The site has two signs where one is allowable as an existing non-conforming scenario, and I'll describe that in a moment. And then the last is the site acreage is six acres where 10 is required. So going through those variances, on the front yard, where we have the existing sign today is actually just behind the curb return of the existing driveway. By skewing the driveway, the way we've done to basically bias the truck turning maneuvers to only be allowed to make a right turn out, we've pushed across where the existing sign is. So we're asking the variances to maintain the same sign and shifting that sign just slightly to the west to basically allow it to occur in the same location where it's out there today. And the sign type, I'll show that real quick. Actually, what I'll do is orientation... I'm going to come back to the signs because I want to do these in order to keep the exhibit numbers. So the signs themselves are part of the variance, and that's related to maintaining the existing setback that's there today and the fact that there's two signs as an existing non-conforming.
Mr. Kotay, those, I'm sorry, you may have already said, the ones at the Sylvan Drive.
The one at Sylvan Drive will stay where it is.
And the others at Drive.
Oh, I'm sorry. Will be shifted to the west, and the one that's on Dryden will stay where it is. So we've pre-marked these boards with exhibit numbers, and I'm going to go back through those based upon some initial markings that we did just to keep that order, but I will come back to the signage briefly. So with respect to the site, the way the site's being designed, we had to include in the site new drainage features. What's out there today, and I'm going to show exhibit A3, which is the grading and drainage plan, which is CG 101. And CG 101 dated last revised 9/22/2023. The grading and the stormwater for this basically allowed us to position the driveway as well as the parking, and then allowing us to utilize two bioretention basins that'll serve for the purpose of water quality and water quantity, as well as infiltration basin. Infiltration basin's on the south end of the site, and the bioretention basins are in both the east and the west. On the site today, there's an existing detention basin along the north of the property line that we're tying back into. So all of our design goes into the existing system that's out there today. It maintains that same discharge point as it goes off-site. So we're utilizing the same point of analysis that the existing site was designed to, but under the new regulations. So we meet our recharge requirements with this southeast infiltration basin and our water quality with the other basin, the two basins, bioretention basins. So this site layout with the grading rates proposed here requires some walls along the northwest and the west and the south. Those walls vary in height, but they maximize at 5 foot high, which is compliant with the ordinance. And we don't need a variance or anything along those lines. So that's exhibit A3. So A4 is a building perimeter average finished grade calculation. We provided this drawing in order to establish what the finished grade is surrounding the building according to the ordinance. Basically, it's an average grade of all the elevations around the building calculated to establish that elevation compared to the building. So this building will be within the height allowable within the township according to the ordinance, a maximum height of the 45 feet. So our grades, and that could be provided by your engineer, but this grading was provided to allow you to see that analysis. I'm going to walk through these a little quick so I don't... So now, I'm going to come back to A5. A5, or come to A5. A5 is the detail sheet in the set. It's identified as details, drawing number CS 501, and stated last revised 9/22/2023. And this drawing shows in the bottom left the two proposed signs. They're actually existing signs that are out there today with the new signage on it according to whatever the proposed tenant will be. So we've identified the height, lettering size that matches the existing that's out there. And the structure is going to maintain the same exact, what you see out there today. Basically, one side stays in place with just new signage applied to it. The other one's going to be relocated back along the main entrance drive, as I spoke to earlier, a little bit to the west. So those signs are basically going to look what you see out there today. And there's actually pictures of those signs in photographs that we provided with the site and the photo log that's in the package we delivered. So then going quickly to the, I'm going to refer to as A6. A6 is the WB67 Truck Moving Plan, CP 101, dated last revised 9/22/2023. And this just speaks to the variance we're asking for for the truck width, truck lane coming into 30 for the truck maneuvers that make their way through. This allows trucks to enter and exit while there's a vehicle staged to exit and another vehicle can enter in. And this also shows the maneuver I was speaking to earlier, where a truck can come in and back into the stalls and show support of the both ends so that the worst-case scenario of the stalls is identified on this plan. Next drawing I'm going to bring up is A7. A7 is the utility plan. Utility plan is drawing CU 101. It's dated last revised 9/22/2023. And just in quick explanation, our utilities are going to utilize the existing utilities that are out there today that support the office building. We're tying it to sanitary on the east end, the existing line that supports the original building for sanitary. building for sanitary. Water, we're creating a loop through the site tying into the existing tap that's along Dryden Way, looping through the site, providing fire hydrants, as well as tapping into the line that's off of Sylvan Way. So that loop will support the fire suppression for the site as well as the onsite hydrants, and our sanitary is connected to the existing system. Electric and gas come off of existing utilities located in the northwest corner of the site. Next drawing I'm going to bring up is A8. A8 is the landscaping plan. So referring to what I said earlier in the testimony about the plantings, if you notice in the landscaping plan, there's nothing shown in this whole perimeter here. The intent is to maintain all that existing tree coverage. You see when you drive by the site and around the corner from Dryden through Sylvan, that tree line that's along that entire run will be maintained. And then interior-wise, there's plantings around the basins, around the entrance drive as it makes its way through in areas adjacent to the building, as well as along the perimeter, and also foundation plantings along the east side. So that planting plan basically utilizes both the existing screening as well as adds some additional plantings on the site for decorative purposes. So the last drawing I'm going to bring up is the lighting plan. The light plan is drawing LL101, exhibit A9, dated last revised 9/22/2023. So for the site, we're adding lighting associated with the parking areas as well as the loading areas and the new entrance drives and the orientation along Sylvan Way, and then maintaining our connection along Dryden with lighting along that, along there. We are, in that layout, comply with the lighting required by the ordinance, and we're using LED lighting throughout the site. So then, just basically to touch on all those different elements of the design, again, going back, this site was limited by the Highlands exemption that we had to work within. So when you see the level of development, we're basically at or near the allowable impervious for the site as a whole, and that allows for basically the fall under that exemption status, which we have received notification that it complied with. So I think that covers all of the site conditions relative to both the variances, both existing and non-conforming. And then from a, from a big-picture point of view, we'll go through architectural testimony as well to identify, you know, additional information relative to the site. Is there anything else?
Just if you could clarify, was it, the drawing, is the 30-foot-wide driveway at Sylvan part of the consideration of the truck movement, that wide, it's 30 feet as compared with the 24?
Correct. The truck turning maneuvers are on the plan. The drawing that I brought up before illustrates the WB67 maneuvers that are utilized along Dryden, along Sylvan Way to support the width required. I apologize, I'm just going to bring the drawing back up again. So again, to the same, to that justification, the request for the relief is associated with the truck turning maneuvers along the main access drive coming in off of Sylvan.
And that will be a right turn out and left turn in?
And a left turn in, that's correct.
Mr. Chairman, question?
Ask, please.
It's probably not you, but it's a general one that I'll throw out there. So the building, there is no tenant obviously locked in and hasn't yet. Is there potential in the building to become a multi-tenant use?
If to come up or use in Mexico?
Zach List, it's not anticipated at this time. I don't, I don't think it's designed for it, and it's not something we're expecting to happen.
Okay, so then that leads me, like, to my next thing, because you had brought up a plumbing supply company, and there's obviously some varying plumbing supply companies that do exist off of Route 10. I had the pleasure of having to go there for my plumber one day. So you would have employees parking, and that's where the 27 spaces come from?
Microphone, please.
Oh, you'd have, you'd have, you have 27 spaces there for employees, you know, of the facility, but if you have like a plumbing supply-type company, you're probably going to have a lot of traffic coming to the facility to get stuff.
This would be a wholesale location for them, not necessarily a showroom? I mean, it's...
Well, I'm not saying even a showroom. So like HVAC, plumbers, electricians, when they have buildings like this, right?
Again, this would be anticipated to be more of a wholesale location, not necessarily where those guys are, you know, loading their trucks, you know, for end-use. That's not the anticipated use.
No, again, I'm just, I'm going off of buildings that I've seen on Route 10 that are plumbing supply, electrical supply houses, that are large buildings like this, and they do have a significant amount of, you know, they do ship stuff out, right? That is a big part of their business, but they also do have a significant amount of business of local entities coming to actually pick up stuff. So that's why I'm just, I'm questioning the 27 parking spaces, you know, unless they're just literally just shipping out nationwide and loads are coming in and going out, and there's never going to be, okay, that's one thing, but there's a tenant here, so...
It implies with the number of parking spaces that it's just a pure warehouse and not really even a wholesaling location.
Right. And our thought is, you know, an end-user is going to have to conform to what we're providing, right? So if the use, if the design doesn't really cater to a particular use, then it might not be the right end-user for them. So that's part of our design consideration is to, you know, limit the overall traffic to and from the site, something that fits within what we're putting forth.
I mean, under our master plan, it may very well be that with the limited number of parking spaces, you can't really have customers pick up and drop off or anything like that. It has to be strictly a warehousing facility.
And I think that's what Mr. List is getting at with regard to why we anticipate it would be just wholesale, not retail.
Anticipate's a great word, though.
I was going to say, even wholesaling can see a lot of traffic, so...
Yeah, and some of the entities that are already in our town, sometimes when their uses change slightly, either because of tenant change, they have to come back before this board to adjust their parking. So as long as you're aware of that upfront, that's what we're trying to make sure you're aware of.
That is understood.
Yeah.
Okay, other members of the board have questions? Mr. Math?
Yeah, I got like, probably one question with about five parts. No kidding. All right. First of all, on the driveway coming in, you don't really show the movement for a vehicle making a right turn into the driveway, a truck making a right turn into the driveway.
No, trucks are not intended to make a right turn into the driveway here. If they do, let's say, so this tenant is being basically set up for the intent that they're not supposed to promote traffic coming in from the right. So this driveway is specifically designed to prevent that, not to allow that. If a truck were to inadvertently, and again, learning, there may be the one truck in its first, you know, maneuver coming to the site realizing they're not supposed to come this way, they can maneuver through Dryden and come in on this, but we don't propose this to be a main access drive for trucks because we don't like to mix the trucks with the employee parking.
How's the turning radius coming in?
Yeah, this is, a truck can come through here, it'll have to go over the drive aisle to be able to make that maneuver, but a truck can come through Dryden into here. Again, fire truck maneuvers show that maneuver as well, you know, in terms of, that's obviously a different vehicle, but in that, on another plan, I can illustrate that if you'd like. And the purpose behind that is really, trucks really want to come in this way, you know, for the purpose of the counterclockwise maneuver to back up over their left shoulder. That's really the intent.
Understood, so there's no blindside backing, which is good.
Right, right, that's exactly, that's the way you want to operate.
Okay, so, and I appreciate that you designed the driveway at 30 feet so that trucks could go both directions at once. With five loading docks, is that really a major consideration?
It's just, for reasons of not wanting a truck to have to, truck trying to pull out of here, if they had to go wide to get out of this drive aisle, I didn't want another truck waiting on Dryden, on Sylvan Way, so you didn't mean to have to come in. So basically, if a truck's positioned here to leave, the other truck can come in, fully be staged inside the drive aisle before the other one has to leave. That's the intent.
I guess I can appreciate that, but if, from the rest of your testimony, but the Highlands exemption, it sounds like every square foot of impervious is critical to you on the site.
Right, and one of the reasons, we minimized everything, actually. We got down to the point, for example, here, I might have added another loading dock on typical design, created additional bays. They'll be back the bays down, we back the content down to meet this building within the limits of that exemption.
If you don't have the exemption, what does that imply? What does that mean?
So if you don't have the exemption, unless, for example, want to build, we were asked if we could put a much bigger building on this site, and putting a bigger building would trigger us into the Highlands, when Highlands, right now, this would not be permitted to be built if I were to exceed the existing exemption, the allowable, either quarter acre, it would go through a different process. Again, we were looking here to build this and minimize our impacts to the site, maintain that tree line that's out there today. So combining all those, this went through, I guess, I want to say over a dozen iterations to come up with a plan that fit the profile of, again, from a design engineer point of view, I like to have a 30-foot aisle everywhere, but I minimized it to just this entrance here. The 24 is adequate for the truck on a very limited basis to use it, but we don't usually like to provide that as a typical drive aisle for trucks. You may see that in other designs as well, but that's the nature of it.
And I believe your attorney said that the exit on Dryden was right out only.
No, it's the, he meant to say the exit on Sylvan is right out only, if you could say that.
Yeah, this, you've shown on your aerial, a site triangle, as if left turns are allowed out on Dryden, which I guess they are.
Yeah, today, they're, the distant conditions, if you look at the islands that are in Dryden Way, they're really set up for both left turns and right turns, the full movement.
So one of the issues I'm kind of concerned about, and I think Ted seems, might have similar concerns, is the amount of parking. I guess you're at, what, one for every 2,500 square feet?
No, I apologize, I'll clarify that. We're at one per 1,500. It's actually one per 1,488 square feet, so we're parking at about one per 1,500 on this site.
You have 67,000 square feet, correct?
Right, divided by the 27 will give you the one point of the 1,488 square foot.
Isn't it 2,488?
I can do the math real quick just to confirm that I'm not speaking at a turn there.
2,500.
Is it 2,500? I apologize, I'm sorry. Let me go through that real quick here, just to confirm. 67,200 divided by 27.
2,488.
2,488, I'm sorry, I apologize. I'll strike that and go back to 2,488.
So I guess I was, given you don't have a tenant and don't know how many employees are going to be there, and, you know, I have my own personal issues with our warehouse ordinance as it stands right now, and parking, is there any opportunity for land banking some parking spaces on the site the way you have it? I understand that you've got an impervious issue with Highlands.
Yeah, I would say that right now, based on the square footages that we have, I can actually give you an idea what that is off the site plan proper. So if I go back to the site plan, our allowable quarter acre of impervious from the existing, the existing impervious is 99,797. Allowable would be to add 10,890 square feet to that. So our allowable would be 110,667. We're at 110,372. So we're within 305 feet, 315 feet of the allowable. So putting in a parking, a nine-by-18 parking space, you know, you might be able to fit maybe two more space, no, one without the drive aisle. I'm shaking my head here. Yeah. So, I'm shaking my head here.
Not used to...
So you'd be able to fit two parking spaces additional that's there today and stay under the impervious.
Stay under the impervious. And then my next question, you're probably going to tell me you can't do it either because of that. We have a lot of residential coming into this campus. We do not have sidewalk. Our master plan calls for sidewalk in all redevelopment or new development projects. Do you have any ability to put sidewalk on this site? And I imagine that you're going to tell me the same impervious answer.
That would be part of the argument. The other is the impact the sidewalk would have along, let's say, Dryden, Sylvan Way, excuse me, as an example. What's out there today, if you look at the, if you were to start at this driveway and just start heading towards the west, there is existing electrical equipment that's within where you'd want to put the sidewalk. There's trees that are within that same driveline, there's a fire hydrant. So if you were to step the sidewalk, you wouldn't be able to just do a straight linear sidewalk along the frontage. Not to say you couldn't meander, but you couldn't do a straight sidewalk. But again, go back to that number, 300 and, say, was it 315 square feet wouldn't allow for additional driveway, additional sidewalk along the frontage.
And in the public rightaway, does that count towards the Highland exemption?
Under our scenario, it's usually put together as a package in terms of an overall project. I don't know how else you could designate that. I'm not aware of a way to bifurcate it if it's associated with the project. I'm not sure if...
I would imagine the Highlands would look at it as a holistic thing inside the rightaway, unfortunately, or outside the rightaway. But there are exemptions, and I don't know about Highlands, but from DEP, for permissible sidewalk, not counting toward, you know, imperviousness.
Yeah, I'm not aware if the Highlands honors that.
Those are all my questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Other members of the board, Mr. Bonnack?
So, just trying to find a way, you've got that minimal variance request, I think it was, you have 130 feet of, for the loading bay distance?
Correct.
And 133 is what was required, is that?
143 is required.
Oh, 143, 13 feet.
It's a 13-foot.
All right, and I assume that the reason why you want that variance is for all the reasons you just spoke about with Mr. Math, okay?
Correct.
All right, and you consider that 130 feet still entirely reasonable for the movement of the vehicles?
Correct, that is the industry standard, and it's based upon the WB67 truck maneuvers. And the maneuvering plan shows that it adequately allows for the trucks to come out, but there's not much, not much play in that.
All right. I also saw many notes to the fire lanes to be identified on the plans. Could you just point those out to us so we can make sure that it's covered?
So it's a little hard to see in the dark gray here, but there's a bordering fire lane striping along the entire drive aisle as you make your way in off of Sylvan Way, and it makes its way all the way on the west side of the drive aisle down to the parking spaces, and then on the east side as well, coming down to the loading bay, and then around the western portion of the building site and along the entire run of, I'll call it the east-west access drive for the employee parking, out all the way to Dryden Way, and that's in response to the fire department comments that we got on the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other members, Mr. Napolitano?
Thank you, thanks for all that testimony, by the way. I'm looking at this one here, which I guess is the one you handed out to us.
Sure.
There are some sizable trees on the property that are going to be demolished. I didn't see that on the demolition plan.
Yeah, the demolition plan identifies, the one tree we have to take out is for moving the sign. And if I move the sign, there are more trees that could be taken out if I put the sign in a more advantageous location, but what I did was move it back and just try to take the one tree out. The orientation of the driveway does take out a few trees here, but that's to get that orientation, I don't know how to avoid that.
And the same thing happened on the, is that the southeast part of the building?
We're not, yeah, we're not taking any trees out along here, along the drive aisle, that's staying, drive aisle's staying in the same orientation where it is today, but our building location has a couple of trees in the corner of the existing building that are next to the existing loading dock that's out there now.
Okay, I'll let those two, and then a bunch in the parking lot, those obviously are going to be gone, but it looks like on your other plan, your landscaping plan, you will be adding some more trees and shrubs and stuff.
Correct, we're adding about 33 evergreen trees and around 12 shade ornamental-type trees around the site.
Okay, good, thank you for that. And then the old driveway that's there?
Mm-hmm.
I know Mr. Math talked about banking parking spots, I don't really see any plan for that little roadway there?
This roadway is being eliminated for a detention basin.
Okay.
That's being a very tight green space, yeah, for the, and that goes back to that balance of the impervious.
Okay, and then last, are there any plans for any solar panels on the roof at some point?
I think discussed by the architect, I think at this point, or the client. It's just a consideration, but I don't...
Fine. Congratulations, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Other members of the board have any questions at this time? Mr. Canji, I know, do you have any?
Yeah, just a little bit of housekeeping. I guess you had originally submitted in July, and our review letter was based on the July submission. You resubmit it recently, I think the plan is dated September, August, I mean, October submission. We have not reviewed those plans yet, so we may have some minor comments, but it looks like you addressed most of our comments.
Yes.
On the second submission.
Correct, we included a letter dated September 26th, and that refers to each of your comments with a response reach. A number of the things I testified tonight were to address your request for testimony on the various elements of the project.
Yes, thank you. So just a couple more housekeeping, I just want to make sure they get put on the plan, that's why I'm bringing them up. The CCTV per the sewer department, they still require the sanitary sewer to be CCTV. The CCTV per the sewer department, they still require the sanitary sewer to be CCTVed. And then on that same sanitary sewer line that comes from the existing building, I noticed that you had relocated the sanitary sewer to avoid the new detention basin, which is what we asked for.
That's correct, in response to your letter.
But just have to make a note to update your plan, so that the old sanitary line is removed from that section from that other building.
Sure, anything that's not going to be included from that leg down, where the new manhole is, will be demolished to the west.
And thanks for providing the site triangles, particularly one on Sylvan, and that's a good exhibit that you have up there. Have you verified that you can, the sightline kind of goes through right-of-way? It is wooded, there is some obstruction there. Have you verified, or are required to verify, that it is in fact a clear sight distance?
I'll go back to the, this plan here. This is the site plan, back to Exhibit A2. And in the site plan, the tree locations that we talked about, there are some trees, but they're pruned to above seven feet from the elevation of the grade. The elements I talked about earlier, like the electrical switchgear box that's out there, as well as the hydrant, are all below three feet in elevation for that path.
All right, thank you. I noticed you, just for a test one, I guess that prior exhibit is a bit better. From environmental restrictions, it looks like it's regulated, wetland regulated area in the upper northwest corner, and those trees are slated to remain in the northwest corner.
Correct, yes.
What about also, is there some restrictions by the driveway and Dryden?
Yes, so on both, if you look at the layout of the plans, you'll see identified, we basically kept a 50-foot buffer around each particular area that we identified. But where the drive aisle went through, we maintained the existing drive aisle where it is. We didn't do any additional modifications besides mill and overlay the drive aisle through that stretch, and then basically repaved this section with the heavy-duty pavement.
Again, we'll probably be issuing a second letter on the revised plan.
Appreciate that.
Okay. That's all I had.
All right, Christine, you have some?
Just some clarification. For the front yard setback, you said that on Dryden Way it was at 146.5. I think it's actually 142.5 at the.
Oh, I apologize, I apologize. Thank you for pointing that out, 142.5.
So both setbacks would be 142.5.
142.5 along both Sylvan and Dryden. I was referring to, there's another building setback because of the skew in that driveline.
Skews both ways.
I appreciate the clarification, thank you.
And as far as the signs go, the one on Dryden Way is maintaining its current location. No changes are proposed there. It's just the one on Sylvan Way, what's the existing setback on it?
Existing setback right now is 6.1, and we're going to maintain the same setback. We're just basically just shifting the monument to the west.
Just the, site plan shows an eight-feet setback.
Okay, I shouldn't do it off the top of my head. I apologize, eight feet. There's a, give me one second.
I think 6.1 is where it is on Dryden.
On Dryden, yeah. So I'm going to again apologize for flipping the two.
So you've got a pre-existing on Dryden.
Pre-existing along, yeah, 6.1 along Dryden, but the eight-foot setback on Sylvan Way would maintain, that's what we're looking to maintain, and just shift it due west. Thank you.
That was it.
All right, any other members of the board? No? Are there any members of the public who have any questions on this witness at this time? Hearing and seeing none. I think that we'll take a 10-minute break before we conclude tonight's hearings.
Thank you, thank you.
Get up, stretch your legs. Nora, you've got the machinery on?
It is on, you're on record.
We're going on record. We're going to let it be known that one of our members, Mr. Stansiel, was called away, and he is no longer going to participate in tonight's meeting. Nora, would you call the roll, please? We still have a call.
Steve Piero.
Here.
Meth.
President.
Napolitano.
Yeah, here.
Joel. Van Aken.
Here.
Dinsmore.
Here. All right. Now, you finished with your engineer.
Yes.
I'd like to call my next witness, our project architect, Mr. Grant Alexander.
If you please raise your right hand, you swear firm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide the board with your background and licensure.
Sure, my name is Grant Alexander, last name is A-L-E-X-A-N-D-E-R. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. My educational background, I got a Bachelor of Architecture degree from Kansas State University. I've been practicing professionally since I graduated in 2005. So been licensed since 2015 in Missouri, subsequently Texas and New Jersey. I've testified in front of boards in multiple states, including New Jersey, most recently in Linden and Sayreville.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Any questions on his qualifications? Hearing and seeing none.
I offer Mr. Alexander as an expert in architecture.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Alexander, did you prepare the floor plans and the elevations that were provided to the board as part of our application?
Yes.
And can you refer to those plans and describe in more detail what is shown in terms of the exterior elevations, the overall design, including the materials, the colors, and the lighting?
Sure, thanks. Firstly, I've got the floor plan up, and I'll corroborate and sort of agree with a lot of the other witnesses that have been up by testifying this evening. A9 is what we're looking at, Sheet A 2.1. This one dated 9/15/23. Looking at, of course, a 67,200-square-foot Class A warehouse.
I'm sorry, I think I, did I already have Exhibit A9, the lighting plan? Or is that marked something different?
Okay.
Did I miss a number?
Get up. If you may. Okay.
That's why she'll ask. All right, Mr. Cote is testifying.
I'll just mark this one A, A, or A9.1, that's fine. Okay, okay, thank you. All right, more stickers.
Trouble with the stickers, sorry.
All right.
67,200 square feet, Class A warehouse, 36 feet clear. We've been through the specifications of this already. Five dock positions, one compacted position, and one drive-in door. I'll switch now to the exterior elevation sheet. This is A 3.1 dated 9/15. Exhibit A 11. So this is sort of a modern warehouse, concrete panel walls. What we've got here is, typically when we'll do these warehouses, the idea is to break away from this being just some rectangular box that is uninteresting and boring. We try and create some ins and outs, we create some relief and push and pull in the facades, and then some changes in the paint color, and some visual interest to try and break away from that very simple concrete box. What we've done here is we've created these reveal lines, which are cast into the concrete. What that does is it creates a little relief in the facade, creates a nice shadow line, and provides a great space for changing a paint color or some other design change on the outside of the building. And to that, to that, I guess, note, we have painted, you know, we've got sort of the darker colors lower on the facade, so create more visual interest, lighter colors up higher. And then the darkest colors are around the main office area here, where we've also accented with full-height glazing. Beyond that, I'll go back to A 10, and I'll explain, in the floor plan, you can see where we've done some of these ins and outs, so along areas where you can see this, there are lap panels that create an even darker shadow line than the horizontal reveals. And then there are also some recesses where we actually turn panels 90 degrees and create some even deeper points of interest along the outside of the building. So, back to the elevations, A 3.3, or I'm sorry, A 3.1.
Yeah, that's A 11.
Yeah, that's right, A 11. We have pulled away a section of this building and created almost an appendage that will house the office function of the building. And we've done that just to, like I said, continually break apart this box and make it not so boring, and give a sort of an accented space where the office or the main function areas will be located. And one last note I want to make on these elevations, we are in the process of designing the structural steel right now. So this is absolutely representative of the aesthetics of what will be built, but some of these numbers may be tweaked as we continue to input the final design steel sizes. So while some of these may change in a minor fashion, in no circumstance will we go outside of the 45-foot requirement that is required by the ordinance.
I have no other questions to this witness. Any members of the board have questions on the architect, for Mr. Van Aken?
Sure. So on your floor plan, on the previous, do you have any spaces designated for the employees as break space, cafeteria, lockers, that kind of thing?
There is nothing specific right now. We have dedicated approximately 2,000 square feet as future office, although the final layout of all the rooms, the private offices, the open offices, bathrooms, the break areas, and so forth, have not been planned yet. Those would be planned when a tenant or a final occupant enters the picture.
Okay.
Other members, any questions from other members?
I just wanted to clarify on your building height. Just be cognizant that the building height is calculated from the average perimeter grade, that's 290, I think it was calculated as 290.10. So to be compliant with the roof height, you're going to have to really be cognizant of the perimeter grade and work your structural steel from that standpoint.
That is correct, and we're in agreement there.
Okay.
Mr. Canjiano, any other?
No, I'm good.
Okay, do you have any questions, Christine?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Okay, any members of the public have any questions on this witness, on this testimony? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Well, my next witness, but with some direction from the board, I don't know how long we're planning on going tonight. I have two additional witnesses I mentioned at the beginning of my introduction. Carl Penke is here to really address the traffic impact study, which is one of the...
Well, there are certain things you have to give testimony on, and we'd like to hear them. We usually try to get out of here before 10 o'clock. But if you, to me, this seems that you can get it done in a lot faster time than that.
I'd like to call him, Mr. Carl Penke.
If you please raise your right hand, you swear firm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
All right, and please state your name, spell your last name, provide your background and licensure to the board.
Certainly, for the record, my name is Carl with a K, P is in Peter, E-H-N-K-E. I am a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, in good standing, Vice President with Langen Engineering and Environmental Services. And my area of expertise is traffic engineering, and I've appeared before this board in the past.
Any questions on his qualifications?
None.
Mr. Penke, can you summarize for the board the methodology that you used in preparing the traffic impact study in July, through July 13, 2013, 2013?
Yes, certainly. We did prepare a traffic impact study that was submitted with the application. That study did follow typical traffic engineering methodology. We sampled traffic lines on the surrounding roadway network. We prepared some projections based upon known activity and growth in the area, and prepared projections associated with the proposed warehouse application that's before you. In general, if you had an opportunity to review the traffic study, there's a couple of key findings from the study. Number one, as discussed, the site is currently developed with an office, an office building of roughly 60,000 square feet, a three-story office building. The proposed warehouse comparative to office development are generally less intensive traffic generators. They do have a truck component to them, obviously, which is different than office. But overall, we would expect probably a generation of about 24% during the course of the day of what the prior office building on this site generated. Also, similarly, during the peak hours, less traffic. As you were aware, and as was stated earlier this evening, this surrounding campus was designed for much higher levels of traffic associated with the office campus that was originally developed and designed for this site many, many years ago. Accordingly, the adjacent road network has high levels of infrastructure, technicality, the traffic associated with this project. More importantly, the driveways are projected to operate at good levels of service. And I won't rehash the testimony, I think Mr. Cote really built a lot into what I would have to say, so without repeating it, he did design the driveway with proper geometry. We talked about the sightlines earlier. Moving the sign out of the driveway location. So the site will function appropriately for the type of use that's envisioned here. Mr. Meth, to answer your question on the parking, I understand your general concerns. The IT does have, is in the sixth generation of parking generation. Looking at that, the data that's on the IT right now, the peak, average peak parking on a site of this size would probably be out in the area between 20 to 24 parked vehicles, less than the 27 vehicles. I think more importantly, what our client testified to is the way he's positioned this site, the types of tenants he would envision as single user. The types of users in the market would really be, that would take this building, would take this building because it works with their needs, I believe that their employee levels are in that 20 to 30 employees, low intensity truck activity. It is a small warehouse building, it is not a large warehouse building, doesn't fit into any of the categories of the major traffic generators such as last-mile deliveries or pick-and-pack sorts and so forth. This is a pretty small specialty building. So I would expect it will be relatively quiet in traffic generation. We're not adding any new driveway locations, any points of conflict along Dryden Way or Sylvan. So from that standpoint, I think it'll work well.
I have no questions. Questions by members of the board on this testimony, Mr. Meth?
Well, since you already attempted to answer my question. I'll try to answer it again. You said the average would be about 24. What would be the 85th percentile, Mr. Penke?
Well, as you know, the data for the 85th percentile is based on a lot of older data, so it's like 1.11,000, and it's really not accurate. But the 95th, the, well, the range, the high end of the data range, the 95th percentile, is below 30 parking spaces, so we're just in that high-end range, 27 or so. So I think the type of tenant that would be attracted to this would be attracted because of the building type and would fit within the parking leagues that are provided here.
So one other question, Mr. Penke, which has nothing to do with parking on site. The volumes projected for the campus build-out, with all the changes in it, am I correct that you found that there was probably just under 500 vehicles an hour maximum on either Sylvan or Dryden?
Yeah, relatively low. Yeah, the campus, as you're aware, with office development, has taken a whole turn and is generating a lot less traffic. If you go back to the days of Gary Davies, when he designed this and modeled it, Gordon, I think you might have done some of that modeling. I remember thousands of trips that were being modeled on Route 10, on 202, and we're just not there anymore, but continuing to see that.
What's your opinion about the number of lanes needed to service that traffic volume? Would one lane per direction service it?
Yeah, potentially.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
So you're thinking of dropping it down to one lane in each direction?
Think about bike lanes.
So that the locals can walk it in safety?
That's not for me, that's for the council and engineering.
Okay. You're the, you're, you've got a degree in engineering, you know this stuff. So, Mr. Van Aken?
Sure. So. So not terribly different than Mr. Meth's question, but with regards to vehicles moving through the circle, any problems with the trucks moving through that area?
What they ran about, that's on the...
Yes. Yeah, that's a problem. That's what I figured. Well, thank you very much for that. But also, there's an expectation that with all the residential developments on that side, the pathway for those vehicles has been designed to go through Sylvan Way in order to get back onto Route 10. So that potential volume...
We did factor that into our traffic study.
Okay.
There were multiple residential developments that are directed at the traffic study. We did capture quite a few of those in our study.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Questions? Mr. Canjano?
No, the trip, or the parking generation was the big one. We're just a little concerned about the number of parking stalls. You just mentioned possibly the 85th percentile is around 30 spaces.
The data set, the high end of the data set, 95th percentile range from 25th to 95th, the high end would be about 30 spaces.
And from the prior testimony, it seemed like you had enough excess impervious area to put a couple more parking spaces in. Raise the count from 26 to...
Two.
Two more spaces. I would suggest you try and either bank or install all the two extra parking spaces.
Would it be all right with Mr. Canjano if we banked it and just did it determined by you in the future?
I'll leave it to the board.
Yeah, I mean, as a condition of resolution compliance, but banking it...
Yeah, I support banking it. Keep the impervious coverage. You may not need the other two. If you need them, then you do it.
Right, that's what I'm...
It's just based on where you might put them. That might affect your drainage. Your basin three, I think, is in an area that you might consider for that. So just be aware of that as you're...
And I believe parking space is already there right now. They were being ripped out.
Yeah, in the southwest corner.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry, I did have one other question.
Mr. Van Hocken?
Where will trucks that potentially don't, assuming you had all of your docks full, where would waiting trucks find themselves before they were able to enter the property?
Well, they would enter the property, they would just have to stay in the drive aisle. Very unlikely scenario. I don't see the type of user in this tenant of the site using all the docks. In fact, the type of tenant...
They might use three of the five and leave separation between them two.
Quite frankly, I think this type of building is probably going to be more attractive to the smaller trucks, too. You'll probably see a higher density of single units and smaller trucks for the type of user that would be interested in this building. It's just not that large to be moving that type of product. Five, six loading docks on a 67 is a lot of product.
Yeah, well, sometimes products are a lot smaller these days.
There they are.
I happen to work for a company that has very small products, so...
Any other questions by members of the board? Christine, did you have any?
No, I don't have anything.
Any members of the public have any questions on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none.
Thank you, Mr. Math.
All right, Mr. Counselor?
On my next witness, Greg Woodruff.
Please raise your right hand. You swear affirm the testimony that you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and provide the board with your background and licensure.
Sure. Greg Woodruff. Last name is spelled W-O-O-D-R-U-F-F. Work at Langen Engineering and Environmental Services. Same address that Mr. Kotay provided, if you ask me for address, which I can't recall if he did. So I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, as well as nationally, with the American Institute of Certified Planners. I'm an associate principal at the firm. I've been licensed as a planner since 2008, appeared before multiple boards previously as a professional planner, including this one, although it's been a couple of years.
Any questions on the planner's qualifications? I'll offer Mr. Woodruff as a professional planner.
Thank you.
Can you describe what your role was at Langen in connection with the proposed development and run through the project location, existing conditions, and the proposed development?
Sure. So I've been involved in the project actually since very early on, since concept plans Mr. Kotay mentioned, a number of iterations that the client has gone through trying to figure out the best development for the property, you know, factoring in all of the environmental considerations and trying to make the best reuse of the property as possible. So in sort of specific preparation for the application, having been part of the project development for quite some time, reviewed obviously the relevant background planning documents, I've been part of the project as it's been developing over time, so, you know, but specifically did review the project application documents, have visited the site numerous times over the course of our preparation for the hearing in order to prepare for the hearing tonight. So with the board's indulgence, I'll touch on what I think are sort of some of the relevant background existing conditions of the property. We've heard quite a bit of testimony about where the site is, what it is. So I don't know that, unless the board would like more of the same. I think, you know, the important things are, in my opinion, the use is permitted, you know, the, there are existing conditions out there. There's somewhat a unique condition on the site in that the property is on a corner, creating those two front yards. That creates a little bit of a unique condition. And again, there is existing development out there. So things like the signs, those are in a location currently because the driveways are essentially being reused. Those signage locations, in one case, is being specifically reused, and in the other has an established location that users are used to. So from a planning perspective, I think those are sort of a salient, existing, relevant conditions that lead to some of the variances that are requested. So with that, would you like me to get into the...
Yeah, if you could address the three bulk variances and the signs, and what provision of municipal land use law do you rely upon as justifying board's approval of those variances?
Certainly. So just to, before we get into the variances that are being requested, just to address, we are requesting, although it's an existing non-conformity, the lot size, the lot is the size it is, just doesn't meet that 10-acre requirement. Relative to the variances that are being sought, again, just to restate them, for the front yard setback whereby we are not providing 150 feet required. Secondly, the maximum driveway width whereby 24 feet is allowed, we're requesting 30. The minimum loading berth length, we are not, we're providing 130 feet, not the distance that is required. And the freestanding signs, we both have issues with the number of freestanding signs. One is permitted, we're asking for two. And similarly, we don't comply with the specific setback distances that are being required.
But the two that are there are what we're retaining.
Correct. Well, I guess in the case of one, we are specifically retaining that exact sign, and in the second, along Sylvan, the basic location, the setback distance is being maintained, and it's just being moved due west.
Right.
Right. So speaking specifically about each of the variances from the perspective of justifying them per the municipal land use law, the first, the 150-foot front yard setback, in my opinion, from a planning perspective, I think this would fall into the criteria of a C1 variance. There are some C2 characteristics, but I think the driving force here is that the lot is unique, both in the fact that it's on a corner, but it also has those askew angles that Mr. Kotay pointed out, and there's been quite a bit of discussion about, you know, it's just a unique condition that creates a little bit of difficulty when you have a building that has right angles, that, you know, I mean, the exceedances into these setbacks are de minimis, really. I would offer two, and Mr. Kotay presented quite a bit of information about this, the aerial photo showed it, all of that vegetated buffering that is in that setback is being maintained. It's all mature vegetation. So from a planning perspective, I think even though we are asking for that variance, again, I would offer that it's de minimis, and the intent of the setback requirement is being upheld while dealing with the sort of unique characteristics of the site. And additionally, just where the loading and the parking has been oriented, again, the real intent of that front yard setback has been maintained in the site layout. Secondly, relative to the driveway width, again, we're requesting a 30-foot driveway width whereas 24 feet is allowed. I would put this under a C2 justification whereby the benefits outweigh any detriment or perceived detriments. In this case, we've heard quite a bit of testimony about the angle of that driveway and the intention of it to really promote truck traffic moving in the direction that everyone seems to agree is the least impactful direction. So from a planning perspective, and seeing how those vehicle movements would work within that width, the ability for those trucks to basically, you know, have one staging while one is turning, I would say offers a benefit that would outweigh the detriment of the additional six feet in width. We are still, the project still is complying with the impervious cover limitation. It's not like we're asking for a variance from that to accommodate this extra six feet in width. It's really about the efficient movement at that driveway with the angle that's being proposed.
And Mr. Woodruff, does that variance also... Sorry. Is that variance also further one of the purposes of the municipal land use law?
Yes, and I'll get to, I'll address all of them at once, yeah. So the third variance, the loading berth length, again, we heard discussion that we're requesting 130-foot length whereby the ordinance requires a dimension longer than that. Mr. Kotay has provided exhibits that show how the turning movements work for a truck vehicle that, as you heard, is the largest that would be anticipated to utilize this site and that might even be larger than really what ends up utilizing this site. And from a planning perspective, given those facts, that that 130-foot dimension is shown to work for the vehicle movements, I would offer that, you know, in light of all the discussion about not creating impervious area where it isn't absolutely necessary, not making that dimension any bigger than it absolutely needs to be to facilitate that truck movement, again, I would put into the category of a C2 variance whereby the benefit of not having that additional impervious area outweighs any detriment of not complying with the specific number that is in the ordinance in this case, if it can be shown to function as has been shown. And lastly, relative to the signs, again, I would put this into the category of a C2 variance whereby the benefit of keeping the one sign, physically the one sign where it is, reusing that structure right next to that existing driveway on Dryden, and similarly, keeping the sign on Sylvan in essentially the same location, although it's going to move minimally. But the benefit of that, the familiarity of the sign location, having two of them because there are two driveway locations, as was testified by Mr. Kotay, there really is a desire not to mix truck and passenger vehicle traffic. So having, you know, appropriate signs at those two locations so that, you know, to further limit the mixing of that traffic would outweigh, you know, any perceived detriment of having one extra sign. Again, it's somewhat unique in that you're on a corner, you know, so two signs, it's not like you're having two signs sort of in succession along one roadway frontage. There are two roadways that form that corner there. So in my opinion, from a planning perspective, you know, the benefit of that would outweigh any perceived detriment of the exceedance. So relative to, you know, some of the purposes of zoning within the municipal land use law, I would offer Purpose G is furthered sort of by the conglomeration of all these variances in furtherance of the project. Purpose G is to, quote, "provide sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses according to environmental requirements to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens." Again, for me, this is a somewhat very general purpose, but again, it's, this is an appropriate location, it's a permitted use, and Purpose G is certainly furthered by this appropriate location, you know, being facilitated to re-energize the site with a warehouse use whereby, as we heard in the beginning, in its current office use, there would be struggles for the future of the property. So relative to the negative criteria, I don't believe there's any substantial impairment or impact on the public good. We've talked about a number of things, but just to restate a few of the highlights, I think, you know, the property is redeveloping a site while complying with the impervious cover requirements. The existing tree line is being maintained as the buffer in the front. The site has been designed to comply with industry standards for a warehouse facility of this nature to function truck turning movements, vehicle turning movements. We've had discussions about contingency plans that could be made relative to the vehicle parking spaces. So I think, you know, there are no, in my opinion, from a planning perspective, substantial impacts to the public good. And similarly, I would offer that from a planning perspective, there's no substantial impact on the zone plan. Again, the use is permitted in the SED 10 zone. And I would specifically highlight from the master plan, Goal 5, to preserve and enhance the township's retail, commercial, corporate, research, and professional office areas by implementing land use strategies that respond to modern market and real estate trends. You know, I think there's been discussion, and I'm sure this board is no stranger to applications citing some of the challenges for the office market throughout New Jersey and specifically in Parsippany, you know, repurposing the site for warehousing, I think, sort of speaks to that goal from the master plan and a number of other points in the master plan that sort of talk about some of those challenges. So with that, I would offer, I think, from a planning perspective, in my opinion, the variances that are being requested are justified. The board would be justified in granting.
I have no questions.
Members of the board have any questions on the planner's testimony at this time? Mr. Van Hocken?
Sure. So in reviewing the ordinance, are there any restrictions about the types of materials, hazardous materials or such for warehousing sites in this zone?
I would have to check. I do believe there are. I don't know all the specifics yet. There are restrictions. I couldn't rattle them off for you off the top of my head, but the applicant will certainly comply with those restrictions.
Okay. And just for clarification, if the architect needs to answer that, fine, but is the building designed for storing of any temperature-controlled materials or any other types of materials that wouldn't be normal packaged goods?
I would defer to the architect, just because I wouldn't want to misstate. I believe I know the answer, but...
No, right now, there is no provision for cold storage or anything other than standard warehouse storage.
So just packaged materials that are ambient materials?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
We did hear a remark about a possible wine merchant wanting to use the facility, so I would imagine there would be at least some temperature control.
If that were the case, yes, we would need to, the final fit out of the building would have to reflect that, not just in the office, but in the entire warehouse to accommodate a tenant like that.
That technically falls under ambient range, though, for...
Does it? Okay.
You are correct.
I was unaware of that.
No problem.
So now our...
Gordon has his specialties and I have mine.
Yes. Our planner here is the one that asked questions of the planner, I think.
Yeah, planners always give such great testimony.
Oh, well, there you go.
They're always sure to hit on the points. No, thank you. I mean, I would agree with the comments made. And as far as the signs, they're existing, so they should, they've worked thus far for the particular site without detriment, correct?
Agreed.
All right, that's it. Okay. Mr. Canjano, do you have any...
No, no comments.
Questions? Anybody else? Hearing and seeing none. Are there any members of the public who have any questions on this witness, on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Counselor?
Just briefly, I don't want to belabor the record, and I know people want to get at it timely. I would just want to emphasize the last thing that Mr. Woodruff noted, Goal 5 of the master plan, which isn't just, you know, the master plan, but repurposed, but what I think everybody's facing nowadays is this repurposing of, you know, sites that really are not useful anymore. And this is a great, small, relatively small warehouse and fits this area well. So, and I think, you know, I'm not going to reiterate Mr. Woodruff's testimony, the NUL just features, but really the variances that are requested are minimal and are justified. And I'll submit to the board.
All right. Well, then, this means we ask the public if there are any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application at this time? Any members of the public who wish to speak in favor of this application at this time? Hearing and seeing none. This closes the evidentiary portion of tonight's hearing. Is there a need for a discussion, or do we wish to go right to a resolution? Is there a need for a discussion, or do we wish to go right to a resolution?
I pray of one thing I want to state.
Mr. Math?
I'm disappointed that we don't have the opportunity to put sidewalk in here, given the way we're changing this business campus. And I know our master plan says that we want sidewalk and all, develop and redevelop sites. However, I recognize we have no ordinance provision right now that requires this applicant to put a sidewalk in. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I like the thought of looking into whether or not the lanes could be made, single lane in some of these things in each direction, and therefore give some room for a bicycle lane or a pedestrian lane or something like that. That is something that should be investigated.
Absolutely, but I also put what I put on the record because we're going to be hearing other applications in the business campus.
Yeah.
And I don't want people saying you let them off the hook.
I would never accuse you of that, Gordon.
I'm more worried about the applicants.
Well, Tom, when you were on the Board of Adjustment, you would provide an annual request for changes...
Yes.
To our ordinances.
Yes.
Maybe we should be doing that from the planning board to the council.
Well, I certainly think there should be a discussion over the way that we approach sidewalks and the way that we approach pedestrian traffic in areas such as this. I actually...
We have revisions to the master plan, minor revisions, almost annually, we could do something.
And the master plan does specifically identify this area as a priority area for sidewalks.
If you recall, Councilman, we did propose something a few years ago with regards to the solar panels and the electric vehicles as well. So that is something we've done in the past, and certainly merits doing it again in the future.
Agreed.
Well, you're getting off the hook this time.
May I add one thing, though? I don't think I formally admitted, but I'd like to move through A1 through A11 to be considered as in evidence.
We kind of do that a little less formally here than some places, so they're, once they're admitted, they're admitted. So, all right. Do I have somebody wishing to continue comments, or do we wish to have a move a resolution?
I'd like to make a resolution, if that's okay. Resolution to approve application number 23, call in 523, New Jersey 9 Sylvan LLC on 9 Sylvan Way, block 202, lot 3.05, zone SED 10, preliminary and final major site plan to construct a warehouse.
Did we have any...
There were some conditions. The applicant agreed to Morris County Planning Board approval and, let's see, to comply with the board engineer and planners' recommendations in their reports.
With one exception, I think, but the sidewalk.
Except for the sidewalk. So it includes a sanitary sewer TV updating the plan, so the old sanitary lines are removed, verifying clear sight distances at the driveways. There was a correction just in the testimony about the setback for the signs on Dryden and Sylvan, and that the applicant will comply with the ordinance regarding the height, and they understand the calculation of the height. And then the applicant agreed to bank two parking spaces.
Agreed.
All right. Okay. Amended as described.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
DePiero?
Yes.
Math?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
On Aiken?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Is there anything else?
Make it into a bike lane with sidewalk and sidewalk.
Is there anything else that the board has that they need to discuss at this time?
Nothing more.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
It's a little more space.
Mr. Shaw, you look like you're going to make a motion to adjourn.
I'm motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
We're not...
Mike, you're good. Second, all right. So ordered.
I think we get hold of the deal some more.
All righty then.
That works, that works.
Yep.
Thank you.
If anybody can decide where they order.
What happens?